Good evening, we're going to go ahead and get started with our work session. It is now called order, Chief.
Good afternoon, hope everyone has had a opportunity to spend some time with family and enjoyed your Thanksgiving holiday. I have only one item today, it's on the consent agenda, item C. And this is a resolution to approve a maintenance contract with Williams Fire Apparatus to provide labor equipment, materials, and incidentals necessary to provide inspections and preventive maintenance on some of our apparatus on an as-needed basis. I briefly spoke about this at the previous work session. And this is a mirror to that contract that I presented at the last time, it was with Brendan Mountain Fire Apparatus. And this, this contract as well, there's no upfront money or no obligation to that. This simply just reflects their labor rates, if and when we call them, and travel rates to come here and perform some maintenance on our apparatus. Any questions about that? Very short and simple, thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
Good afternoon. I have two items this afternoon. The first is a resolution to enter into a contract and be ready to rent pro cleaning services, just to do general cleaning in our headquarters building as well as our training center. It's not to exceed more than $28,800. Any questions on that one? All right, moving along to the second one. It is the changes to the baseline specifications to our record rotation contract with Police Department of the City. Just to account for the changes in the cost of doing business, it was last updated in 2022. Hopefully you had that before you there, just some of the fees had increased marginally. And there's a couple of things that are included in the current contract that weren't in the 2022 contract. Any questions about that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great afternoon.
All right, thank you. Ms. Jones?
Good afternoon, I have one item on the consent agenda 11E. A resolution to approve a contract with Terminix to provide full exclusion of all entry points and provide propel to the building located at Animal Services in the amount of $5,300 and then monthly pest control for $24, $25 a month. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Benson?
Yeah, we're looking at a transportation alternative program. And actually, the state is going to be paying 80% of this project and the city will be paying 20% of it. And, and basically, you know, if, I don't know if y'all have gone down Pine Street recently, but, and noticed the sidewalks, but, you know, sidewalk, some of the sidewalks are three feet wide. Yeah, that's, that's not the norm, but, you know, it's, it's a situation like that. And the idea is to make them wider because there's a lot of traffic at UNA, you know, when they're, when they're going to school and when they're leaving, I guess, so. But that's, that's why we're working on this project. Any questions?
I have a question, please. Here it says that it's going to be a $925,510.50 and we are going to be covering 20% of that, or is that 900?
20% of.
20% of the 900.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, may I clarify something? We're actually splitting that 20% with University of North Alabama. We're going to be paying 10% of our portion. So this is part of the overall plan on Pine Street. So it's not a, it is an 80-20 grant, but we've agreed with UNA to split that 20% portion 50-50 with them. So it's, it's just, it's half of what you showed us that will be our portion.
I have a question, this is about the sidewalk, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What does the study say about this? Is it all of it that needs to be done? Is it to necessarily widen or is this a beautification project?
Yeah, I think, I definitely think it's necessary to widen. Three feet, I couldn't believe that there was something that narrow there.
What about the curbs?
The curbs? Well, yeah, they, you know, there's, there's places in town that when you want to, you know, go across the street, they'll have a, an incline, you know, that takes you, you know, to the, to the street and then across it. And that'll be the same situation here. You know, if they've got to, if they've got to go across the street, you know, it'll be, it'll be that way.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
One more time, this is, this is part of that Pine Street study. This in multiple phases, and this is the section from urban to west, is it Mataloo, I think is what it is. So this is part of a plan. It is time sensitive in that we're trying to get some of this work done prior to the construction of the stadium, or the finishing of the stadium. We do expect some additional traffic there. We know that UNA is crossing over Pine Street with some buildings and activity and more residents or fraternities other places. So this is part of the overall plan, part of the long-term plan. And this is just phase one of the first part of our plan implementation.
And Bill, correct me if, if I'm wrong, you don't have to get up. This is sidewalks only, this has nothing to do with the lane changes or any of that that's been talked about. There's been a lot of talk this week that we're taking it from four lanes to three lanes with, with this tap. I just want to clarify, this is sidewalk project only for folks.
Yeah, that's all, that's all we're doing.
Okay, thank you for converting my ask.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, Ted, out of town, asked me to represent items 11F and G on the consent. And the first one is a contract with Meth equipment to provide a crane with an operator and a man basket for the purpose of cleaning a grease trap and replacing mixer at the Cypress Creek wastewater treatment plant. I have no idea what either of those items are. But it's, it's for $8,000 and it is based on an estimate of $200 an hour, eight-hour minimum for five days. So $1,600 a day for five days. But like, like I said, I don't know what a grease trap or a mixer is at a wastewater treatment plant, to be completely honest.
Well, I don't think we should have improved it, man.
Well, that's what you said. Any questions that I probably can't answer? And then item G is a contract with Shepherd Services to install a high-tide skated unit at the new Veteran Park lift station. And that allows, I think there's already like a maintenance contract with Shepherd, but since this was a capital item, it needed a separate contract. And it just allows the water department to remotely be able to take readings at that new lift station. Any questions on that? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darian?
Good afternoon, all. Happy to see all your smiling faces on this freezing cold day outside. I have three items on the agenda. Item HJ, H I J. The first one is a renewal of our contract with Muscle Shoals Fire Extinguisher. We do yearly inspections on all our fire extinguishers on our campus and on our vehicles and our substations. So this is a renewal of that contract. And the price, you can see the list, it's a list, and the price went up on a couple of items, but for the most part, they stay, they stay the same. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we bid this out?
We do not bid this out. We don't bid out, we do not, are not required to bid out professional services. Second item is for Chandler painting. This is a renewal of their contract for the same price that they had before. They do our large-scale painting projects on our campus, and so this is a renewal of this contract with them for the same price. And the last is with OutTech. They, we have a service, and this is a renewal of the service agreement with OutTech. They, we, we buy a lot and have a lot of OutTech trucks. And so we have to do yearly inspections of them. So this is an agreement for the yearly inspections and any minor repairs that are required for them to do. Any question about that? They're all renewals this time, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sack?
Good evening, Eugene Sack. I'm a Florence resident and I'm also the lead developer on the Hard Rock Reverb, which is a project ongoing at 400 South Court Street. What we're seeking tonight is an extension of the original developer's agreement with the city of Florence from, I believe, August of '24. Many of you might know, but we had an, we had a need for about seven months of deferred time with the state tourism agency. And we were awarded on November 5th, the Sweet Home Alabama Tourism Investment Act. And we are the first, what they consider mega project in the state, over $35 million base. And we are the first award for that project. And we are the only tourism project in the state right now, over $35 million. So I wanted to, after speaking with the mayor and Chair Simmons, to have the opportunity to present here and as this new, as the council is generally four of you are new to the council. And we spent, you know, last year and a half with the old council, the older administration. I wanted to give an opportunity to answer questions about the project in a public way. I know that there's always misinformation out in the streets and then what you read in the newspapers and what you have by networking, but I wanted to be able to go over that, answer questions to the council because this is the, by dollar, this would be the largest project ever in downtown Florence. It'd be, it's bigger than the city hall, it's bigger than, twice as large as the stadium. So it's going to have a large impact on the city of Florence. We had a multimedia presentation, but when we got here, we realized there was no projector or screen. So our, this was actually just a synopsis of the back end, but I'll go through it with you. As you can see on the front page, that's a, that's a great illustration. Our license and franchise is with Hard Rock International. Hard Rock's the largest hospitality company in the world. They're in over, I believe, 70 countries, they're in over 80 countries with their Hard Rock Cafe. They're in 70 countries with their hotel and resorts. The third slide, again, there were a number of slides here. We had, we had about 25 slides that we were going to present by video. So this is just kind of a summary. The project overview gives you a little bit, what we're doing is we're removing the old Comfort Inn that will be demoed, you know, demolished. And once we demolish that building, which is slated for early summer, midsummer, we would then do subsurface testing to find out what the ground conditions are. You can't really do that while the building's there, you have to do that after it's demoed. And then we'll find out our, our foundations and we'll then complete our design. But we're midsummer completing our designs. But this is given an illustration of what it's going to look like during construction with the staging. We are consuming what is at 401 Pine Street, which was King Realty. For the last 50 years, we're purchasing that building, that'll be closed before the end of this month. Before I continue forward, any jump questions? And I'm happy to have dialogue.
When was this project supposed to take place? Like it, like it started?
Uh, well, if everything went perfectly, we would be under construction about, about two months ago in September. Yeah. Yeah, if everything had just went nice and smooth, you know, with no predevelopments, nephews, but it happens a lot.
Sure.
The economic impact of the project, I think that's been distributed, it's going to create, and this is by a third-party analyst, these are not internal numbers. So you know, I provide none of these numbers, everything comes from third parties. That's a permanently 200 jobs. Non-state occupancy tax income over the next 30 years would be 31 million. Property tax, 12 million, local sales tax, 22 million. And over a billion dollars in economic impact to the downtown area. I wanted to give some comparisons. We all know what the Marriott is, the Marriott Conference Center and Tower. In fact, anybody, you know, we all grew up with it, we've been here our entire lives. Every one of you are long-term residences. I'd like to just mention, what would it be like if we could have an imaginary day if the Marriott did not exist? What would Florence be like as a city if the, if the Marriott Hotel did not exist? The Marriott was the culmination of 20 years worth of development. From 1987, when they started the Renaissance Tower, the, you know, the 360 grill. And then in the mid-'90s, they built the conference center. And then RSA came in and built the Marriott Shoals in 2000, they delivered it in 2005. But the project started as early as 2021. And I want, what I wanted to demonstrate was the characterization of investment. Florence and Lauderdale contributed over 50% when they gave long-term the assets of the conference center and the tower to RSA. And then infrastructure development, there was a lot of money put into that project. RSA put out about 48% or 40 million. If you look back, I just referenced it again today, I went back and I read all the letters that went back and forth in the early 2000s from RSA. In contribution out of pocket, this has been very key because the last administration, the last council was very certain, not only traditionally, but also is not to set a precedent, of not putting cash out of pocket. Your last council, in our development agreement, the only money out of pocket from the city of Florence is $175,000. And that is in a matching infrastructure award. So all monies that Florence and this PDA, this project development agreement, cover are rebates after this project is completed. So there's no cash out of pocket except matching to infrastructure once that's completed. So I just wanted to represent here what the, the balances were in the pie chart. And then lastly, in the arrows, I wanted to kind of give a, a representation of how long it took to build these other large projects in the city of Florence at the time, where the tower took five years, the conference center five years, Marriott Shoals four and a half years. The city hall project is ongoing. And then the Hard Rock project, when we expect to deliver by our standards, we should expect to deliver in early 2028. Any other questions? If not.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, sure.
Um, yes, thanks, thank you for coming and, you know, explaining this part to us. I think some of my concerns are, is, is parking going to be adequate?
Yes, actually, we've had a trap, our traffic study was done by the former head of ADOT. I know that they will be in conference, once this extension's passed, we're going, as I mentioned, we met with the mayor here recently. The entire design team will be working with electricity, on relocation of power lines. The, the traffic study comes in because we're looking at lane changes on Dr. Hicks on this side to help the traffic flow a little bit better and with parking. And we do have adequate parking. We also share, yeah, and that, that's a very good question because there's a second component to that. I happened on the office building next to it with the large parking lot. So when we take the King property out, so we take the minor parking lot, the major parking lot and King, it's half a city block, it's the size of what we demoed here next door. That's the, the same footprint as what you see right now in New Dirt is the size footprint that we have behind this building that will be turned into new and organized parking.
Okay, and then also, I think one of my big concerns for the city is how are you going to handle the construction on, you know, how it's going to affect Court Street and Dr. Hicks and all of that during the construction? Because those are major roads, and so how, how do you plan on handling?
Yeah, if we look, if you look back to the slide, I think page three, I'm sorry, they were slides.
I, Lisa, I've got digital copies of different angles of that as well, that demonstrate where the fencing will be and cut-off points, but I'll, I'll send it to, to all you guys.
And you'll be diverting traffic around those roads?
No, no, we're not.
Tucker, if you're going to speak, if you'll come to the mic.
Sorry. Yeah, the, no, Court, first of all, Court Street sidewalk will have sidewalk protection like you see in more urban markets. So when you walk underneath, you have overhead protection, but we will not be blocking the sidewalk to Court Street. Very important, that's a state highway, that's not standard, you know, city or county. On Dr. Hicks to this side of Court Street, we have 72 that, as you go eastward. But on the west side of Court Street, that is city street. We're looking to absorb one lane of that, and that's going to be going to engineering. So one lane, but it will not, it will not stop traffic on the two-way. You'll have two-way, better, better than what we have here, yes. I mean, it, it's full, full passing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you said that you were awarded on November 5th, how much were you awarded?
Sweet Home Alabama, we were given, since this is a 70-plus million dollar project, we were awarded the full amount of $5 million in rebates of state sales and lodging tax. And part of the resolution from last year's, 20% of those rebates will come from city rebates. This is when the project's completed, taxes are paid in, there are rebates that come back. And 20% of those rebates are from the city. But that rebate is inside, it's embedded in the original contract. We did not expand the original contract where the city is providing a $3 million rebate over 15 years. That was not expanded for the Sweet Home Alabama, that was absorbed inside of it. So the city's threshold has never changed.
Thank you.
Anybody here in additional questions for Mr. Sack?
Let me just, if I could, make one more comment then, just openly. I think what's in front of us is a target of a sunset in August of next year. Right, August 31st? If our timeline holds absolute, in worst-case conditions, I will be back here in May or June looking for an extension till the end of the year. If our, if we're fortunate, we should be able to meet that on the start of this deadline. And the reason I bring that up is because of the delay that we've had, the seven or eight-month delay. I can use the analogy, if you're, if you're planting in spring and you don't get to plant until summer, you don't get to start and replant in December. You'd have to wait till spring to plant the next year. So the delay that we've had over the summer has put us into a position that we feel we can meet August. That's ambitious. But I will have material, I'll just let you know, I will have material changes that are obvious within the city, applications for demo. A lot of the work and everything will be done as we get into March and April, so that you'll be able to start seeing those physical changes and see the applications. But if, if this, because what, what you don't see here are the undersigning, the underneath machinations, which are, all of our planning this summer has to go back to the state. And we don't know how fast the state will respond. But a tower, a hotel tower of this size has to have all the final drawings that we submit to the city, then submitted to the state. So even though we as a city can ambitiously hammer down and, and the building department can review that, you know, quickly in a 30-day period, we could be as much as 60 to 90 days delayed by the state in the same review process. So we will know that early summer, but at that point, you'll see where the project is. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mayor Tyler?
I'll say, Eugene, thank you for being here and the, as we move forward on what we're going to do with New City Hall, hopefully we have some audiovisual capabilities and whatever happens next to us, Ms. Dixon, we'll, we'll be sure to work alongside as, as the project moves forward when it comes to parking and traffic. That'd be part of management stuff, I think he's just looking for extra time to get it started this time. So I'm, I'm here to talk about item 11K, which is a resolution to approve authorization for the attorneys for the city of Florence to file a motion to intervene with the court on behalf of the city to join the plaintiffs in the SSUT simplified sellers' users' tax lawsuit. So there are a lot of very good respectable people who are very smart, much smarter than I am, who have considered this topic for a long time. And these good, smart, respectable people have landed on opposite contrasting sides with this particular issue. It's a complicated topic, even for our esteemed legislatures, which is why I am, partly why I am interested in us pursuing the lawsuit so that other very smart, unbiased, and uninfluenced people can take an objective look at the issue and make a final decision. So none of us like the idea of a, of a lawsuit. We all recognize that's not preferable. But the legislature already addressed this issue in 2018 with House Bill 470, which at the time changed the distribution rate to its current allocation. I'll mention that more in just a moment. You all know, reaching to the choir, our current tax rate, traditional conventional tax rate here in Florence is 9.5%. 4% of that amount goes to the state. Same thing with SSUT, they're going to get there 4%. Of ours, 1% of that goes to Lauderdale County. They actually get 1% of our, our local sales tax. The remaining 4.5% comes to the city to support local city services. Of that 4.5% that comes to the city, we give a little over 1% to Florence City Schools. This is how our traditional conventional sales tax rate works. When SSUT was implemented, it was decided at the time that the online sales tax rate, where we pay 9.5% here in city Florence, they were going to charge 8%. Four of that, 4% of that rate goes to the state. Of their portion, the general fund gets 75% of their 4%, 25% goes to the education trust fund. That's notable, and I'll come back to that. The remaining 4% of online sales tax rate goes into this big bucket in Montgomery. And from there, it's split. Prior to 2018, when the legislature took this up, it was split 50-50. 50% went to the counties, 50% went to the cities. We all realized that was wrong. House Bill 470 passed in 2018, implemented in 2019, changed the allocation to its current rate, which is 60% of the 4% that's our half, it's not the state. 60% comes to cities, 40% goes... 60% comes to cities, 40% goes to the counties. So the legislature has taken a shot at this issue one time already. They made adjustments. And you know what? The sky didn't fall, wasn't declared unconstitutional. Precedent was set in 2018 that the SSUT tax rate allocation can be adjusted without the world falling apart. The legislature was willing to address it then. We'd love for them to be willing to take it up one more time and make it fair. The problem with SSUT is due to a case called, and I don't want to get into, Chief Holt calls it making the sausage. Everybody likes to eat good sausage, they just don't want to know how sausage is made. All right, so I don't want to get too deep into this. The case of South Dakota versus Wayfair makes SSUT unnecessary. All right, that's the issue. It's, it's not even necessary anymore. We don't have to have this two-tax-rate system, 8% online and 9.5% locally. By the way, the average sales tax rate across the state of Alabama, you take them all together, average them out, a little over 9%. Case law exists to drop SSUT altogether and for us to charge a local sales tax or traditional conventional sales tax rate, however you want to say it, to out-of-state sellers. Why is it necessary? Because SSUT, even if the legislatures want to revisit it, SSUT is unfair to local school systems. If you watched what happened to Muscle Shoals, Dr. Holden spoke to this very well last night in Muscle Shoals. It's unfair to local school systems, unfair to Florence City Schools, and it's unfair to every single brick-and-mortar store across the state of Alabama specifically for our interest here in Florence. Local school systems, let me touch on that very briefly. Local school systems, already struggling financially because of school choice. I'm not going to speak politically about school choice, I want to address the math problem with school choice. Public schools have more federal regulations than private schools. They're required to offer, offer services that cost a lot of money, private schools are not required to offer. I have a son who benefits from those. The Education Trust Fund, that little 25% of the state's portion goes into the Education Trust Fund. There's 137-ish K through 12 school systems in the state of Alabama. We support ours a great deal locally with our local sales tax. SSUT puts 25% of the state's portion into the Education Trust Fund, and they divvy it out to those 137 school systems based on enrollment numbers. You know what school choice has done to enrollment numbers, public city schools? They've gone down. Local or state funding for the Education Trust Fund, I don't care what the fund is doing, I'm talking about how they distribute money to local school systems, is causing local school systems to lose some money. They still have things that they have to, services they are required to provide, but they have less funding. SSUT punishes our local school systems. It's unfair how it funds them. Consider this, the brick-and-mortar shop here in Florence, downtown Florence, all right? They pay, or they charge, let me start with this, these businesses downtown or anywhere in Florence, they pay local, they pay property taxes, they hire Florence, Alabama residents to come and work, who earn a living, who also pay taxes. Businesses downtown throughout the city of Florence, they support local charities, they support our local schools, they support local sports teams, they support local events. Quick example of that, Chris is here, there's some business people who are getting together who are wanting to help out with the Florence, the Downtown Florence Parade. These local brick-and-mortar stores are charging their customers 9.5% sales tax. These corporations, however, online corporations, we all know them, Amazon, Walmart, Targets, where we all buy stuff from online, they don't hire local workers for the most part, not here in Florence. They don't pay property taxes, they don't come out and support our local sports teams or our local schools, they don't support our local events, they don't support our local charities, not like the brick-and-mortars, but guess what? They only get to charge 8% to their customers. SSUT awards corporations whose headquarters are in California, New York, Texas, at the expense of local brick-and-mortar stores. Everyone who pays sales taxes, none of us like it, but everyone who pays sales taxes has this expectation that the sales tax that they pay will stay locally to support local services with, within the community they live, where they spend their money. We don't like it, but if I'm going to spend money and have to pay sales taxes, I want it to support local Florence services. My question is this, while we all acknowledge that we don't like sales taxes, it is the way we fund local government. But since we have to pay sales taxes, as representatives of the residents of the City of Florence, how much money in sales tax revenue are we willing for Florence residents to pay just for us to turn around and redistribute it to other locations? Are they paying so much extra in sales tax that we all, as people who are supposed to manage their sales tax dollars, think, there's extra here, we'll take some of y'all's sales tax money that's due here and we'll give it away to somebody else? That's what's happening. Florence residents are paying sales taxes and they're giving it to other people. You want to know what, to what extent? You want to know how much? Me too. Alabama Department of Revenue does not collect it. The legislature can make them collect it, they don't collect the information. It's not gathered, it's not broken down that way. They do not collect the data in that form. They cannot tell us how much City of Florence residents are spending online and what the actual tax collection should be, so there's a guess. And they made this guess, 60% goes to the cities, 40% goes to the counties. It's a guess, we don't know the answer to those questions. A lawsuit would give us the answer to those questions. Here's what happens when that money's distributed. You know what cities have to do? We still have to fund parks and rec operations. Counties don't have parks and rec departments, not for the most part. You know what we have to do? We have to fund engineering departments, Bill. We have to fund building code inspectors. We have to fund our fire departments. You know what? Counties don't do that. Volunteer fire departments out there, they pay property taxes. We have to fund those things. Cities have expectations from sales tax revenue that we're supposed to be meeting those expectations. As it stands now, we're trying to scramble to come up with a cost of living raise for our employees as I cut, Chief Holt, $400,000 from a budget that already has been cut. But we're going to give Florence residents sales tax revenue that is due to be spent here. We're just going to be okay with them giving it to other places, that's what's happening. Our residents should expect to pay taxes and have those taxes stay in this local community and fund services that impact them and not be subsidizing other locations. Do those other locations like it? No. They go, oh, well, don't take money away from us. We know, you should have never had the money to begin with. That's the reality. Should have, it was a flawed system from the beginning. The tax distribution is already, the allocation rate's already been fixed once, fixed, wrong word, already been addressed once, the reallocation did not cover it. So they went to 60%, 40%, still not enough, still not right. We don't know what the real answers are, that's why lawsuits been filed. Consequently, I would encourage this group to pass this resolution and allow us to join the sales, the SSUT lawsuit, so we can find out what our city residents are paying towards it and that they get to keep their fair share and that we support Florence City Schools and that we support local brick-and-mortar shops. And we are capable of meeting our employees' needs, giving them a good living wage, that we're able to fund their departments where they need to be funded, and that residents can ensure that we, as the representatives on behalf of the City of Florence, those residents know that we are spending their tax money wisely and we're being fiscally responsible and not just taking it and saying, we're just going to let some other people have some as well. I know those other places don't like it. I hate the fact that the state has created conditions that pit cities and counties against each other, but they have. As much as I understand and empathize for those places who feel like they will lose some money, the reality is, I was hired to represent these people. I think you all were too, and I hope you consider passing this resolution so that we can participate in the SSUT lawsuit. I'll try to take some questions now. I've got stacks of stuff, and we can talk about how the sausage is made.
Mayor, in all of your research, did you stumble across the trend with how SSUT is growing over local sales tax collection? Because that is a, a very worrisome trend.
Well, anecdotally, we all know everybody is spending more money online. You know what they weren't doing in 2016? They weren't buying cars online. You know what you can do now? I can go online and I can order a car. It's, you know what we weren't doing in 2016 when SSUT came out? We weren't, we weren't placing an order from Walmart and having it delivered to our house. You know what happens when we order online and have Walmart send it to our house? Charge the SSUT rate, 8%, not 9.5%. Some people may be going, hey, that sounds great, I get to pay less than sales tax rate. The problem is, we only get a small portion. You know what our portion of the 8% SSUT is? The 60-40, it's 2.4 cents. Of all of that tax money that's collected, it's 2.4 cents. None of that is directly going like our local sales tax does. If you were to drive to Walmart and pay for it, local cities, Florence City Schools gets 1% of that. We get 2.4 of the SSUT, Florence City Schools gets zero, except what comes from the Education Trust Fund, which is a small portion distributed based on enrollment numbers to, to school systems across the state. So it's going up. There are numbers, I think depending on who you talk to on which side, they're going to say, one side, the cities are overinflating with the online sales tax numbers are, and others are saying, hey, it's, it's not that much, and y'all are trying to get more money. The fact is, Alabama Department of Revenue is not tracking the information they need to, so we don't have the data. You know who's unbiased? It's, it's the lawsuit. Smart people there can gather that data. And they say that we're a model for this, for the country, and that's what, that's what we hear. We were evidently the model in 2018 when it's 50-50. Now they say that we're, we're the model when it's 60-40, it's still not right because our schools aren't getting it, brick-and-mortar stores are suffering the consequences of it. And they argue that it's a simple tax, it's a flat tax, as if companies like Walmart and Amazon can't figure out, don't have the algorithms or the capabilities, the most advanced companies in the, in the world can't figure out the Alabama tax system, so they have to have a flat tax rate. I, I'll tell you, if that's the case, our local brick-and-mortars, you know the, the sales tax issues they have to deal with? And we're like, Amazon can't figure it out, we're just going to call and charge them a flat tax rate. It's wrong, it's broken, and, and we need to fix it. And I think the lawsuit would, would be the way to do that. The legislature had a chance, it didn't go far enough.
Any additional comments or questions, Mayor?
Mayor, I have a question, you may have addressed it. The League of Municipalities, where do they stand with this?
It's, so the Leagues are going to support cities and the county commission associations going to support the counties. I mean, it's, it's how that's going to go.
Okay.
Yeah, and what you're seeing, beginning to see more from now, our school systems who realize the disparity, who are, who are weighing in on this as well, as, as some of the cities.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for me?
So the Leagues are in support of this? The League is?
It didn't. It's my understanding the League is in support of revisions to SSUT. Now, methodology, can't give you, you know, can't give you specifics on methodology, but yes, recognize the flaws.
Any other questions? No.
Hey, so I, I do notice this is under the consent agenda, item K. Can this be moved to the regular agenda so we will have a moment for discussion? That would be 12D.
If the council wants to move it.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay.
Simmons, may, may I say this, as we do that, this is time-sensitive. We have to agree to get on board by December 9th. If we, if we don't by December 9th, which we will have another council meeting, then I, we will, we will miss the window.
Okay.
We'd have to call a special session if we wanted to reconsider it another time.
Okay. But we will move it from the consent agenda and it will move to the regular agenda, so the council have the right to vote above or vote it down. So we'll move it from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, so it will move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. It will move to the regular agenda, going to, regular agenda to D. So did you get that, it'll move to regular D? Okay, next, for the, on the board session, we have the boards.
I'm President Simmons. Can I just, I, I think this, like we would last time, I, I think we need to, I really feel this is something that we're looking at. I think we need to look at this.
We have the tree commissions and the zoning adjustments.
Yeah, that's, that's a long one too. And the problem is with the tree, they are, they are desperate, I mean, that's three that they don't have, and they are working on their conference that they hold every year in March, and it's impaired the very planning right now, and they need bodies.
Where are we on, I know some people met with you today, on districts and representation of our cities?
In the perfect world, you know, we could have somebody in every district. But these are boards, they were volunteer.
I understand.
And really, the districts don't have anything to do with boards. They don't have any, and it doesn't matter what district, whatever applications that we have, you know, anybody can apply that wants to, and we don't like, we don't just pick from the district, we, we offer all applications.
In the eye of transparency. I just, you know, still after meeting and discussing this, I feel like we, we, we need more people to apply, we need more people to be aware of these boards and to know that they have the opportunity.
I understand, but these have been vacant, and we have, we have three applicants and we have three vacancies, so.
Have you sent us the applicants?
Yes, I have. And this is, they have been without members since, you know, November, first of November, and we're in December now, and they, they don't render a stand and they can't function without their members, that's the only thing. I mean, since the last meeting, if anybody wanted to apply, they could have applied and they would have gone too. As soon as I get the applications, you know, forever, whatever vacancy, you'll get them up until the meeting, but nobody, nobody else, it's not like we're just swamped with applications, that's the problem.
Looking over this there, she's right. I mean, they're not, they're not a lot of applicants.
Now the board's, President.
Hold on a second. Finish this topic.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, the tree commission always has been heavily district two, because that's where all our historic districts are, our historic trees, so don't, don't read too much into that. But you sent us a list at Thomas's request of all the commissions and boards and who's on there, and if you'll look, we have three-year terms with, with a limit of two terms. There are people that have been on these boards forever. The reason that is, it takes over 100 volunteers to fill these, and it is really tough to get that many people to put in applications and be willing to serve. I wish that we were turning applications down. I feel like when we get an application, we, we need to strike while we can. I, I appreciate the passion and I encourage all of us to try to get more people to apply, but it's just difficult to get these filled. I had a tree commission person reach out to me today, they've already postponed their last meeting, they've had three resignations, they've got the conference coming up. I'm not sure where they stand with the application with Tree City USA, which has a deadline.
It's the deadline.
We've got Arbor Day coming up in, in February that we celebrate, and they need to get to work and they need some help. And so I strongly suggest that we accept these applications for these two tonight, and then if we want to look at the others before they come up, so be it, but we really need to accept these tonight.
These are not ones that have resigned, they, they've come vacant not as a, as a reappointment, they've come vacant as, you know, as a resignation. So they weren't, it wasn't like they were informed that they were going to have a vacancy, you know? So these, these applications that we've had have been, they have been on file for a very long time, all but one of those that, that you can see on the dates, the applications when they apply. And we keep applications for, we never destroy them. I mean, if they're appointed, then we put them in another, you know, file, but, but we, we encourage people to, but we just don't have the applicants. We don't, you know, we don't have the interest. And when there is someone very interested and they, like the tree and the education board who work very hardly, and they have deadlines, and they have other things that, you know, that a lot don't even know what they actually do, then they need their members. And it's kind of, you know, it's hard to explain to them why we're not filling these, why we keep putting, not putting them up, because nobody else is applying.
I want to encourage, to enter Jekor here, I want to encourage all of the council members going forward to, and I know that you said it's not district-driven, of course it's not, but I do think that the love need to be spread abroad. I want to encourage each council member to reach out to your prospective districts throughout the city, to encourage people to apply for these boards. Let me finish. To encourage people to apply for these boards, to let these, to let people know that these boards are open to apply for board appointments, and let them know that we do have boards to get involved, that there are cities to apply, and so we can get more applicant, get a better applicant pool and to apply, so we can look at them and so it don't be stacked in one district. And so we have more applicants to look at, to encourage. And if we don't, then we have to work with what that is applying. But if they don't, let me finish Kathy. If you don't, if we don't, if you don't know that something's out there, then you can apply, but it's up to us to let people know that their boards are available and that you need to apply. And if they don't apply, we can't make people apply, but it's up to us to let them know that the boards are available and encourage people to apply. And that's all we can do. And I don't think, we've done a good job of letting people know that they're out there. So I encourage you today, going forward, to let people know that they're there. So will y'all do that? Will I challenge you all to do that going forward? Mayor? Sure. Hold on, Kathy, I mean, I'm sorry, Lisa.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm Larnie, and today we sat down with Kathy, and she kind of explained how this process works. And so I just wanted to share that and put that out there. You can go online to the city website and it will list all of the boards that are available. We have a nice list here, I've got lots of things highlighted. There's a lot of boards out there that you can, you can apply for, and you do it right there on the city website. There are a description, there is a description of each of those boards and what you would be a part of. So I would encourage our community to go online and see what those boards are, see if any of those strike an interest to you, and then put your application in, because as Kathy explained, those applications are held indefinitely. And so get your application out there. If, if for some reason a vacancy comes up and you decide you don't want to, I'm pretty sure we're not going to hold you to it. So put your application out there, and we will do our, now that I understand the process a little better, we'll do a better job at encouraging people from our district, because I would like to see, because it doesn't matter, as Kathy explained, district-specific, but it would be really great to throw it out there and have a great representation from across the whole city and not just in one area. So that's, that's all I have on my mind.
I just want to revisit what Mr. Spencer's question, very quickly while we're still in there. I cannot say that the League supports pursuing the lawsuit. I can say that they support changes to that. They recognize the value in us charging online sales taxes coming in. So just to be clear, I can't say that they, that they are advocating the avenue of a lawsuit as much as they're advocating for changes that better reflect where the tax revenue should go. I hope that clarifies that, it just won't be clear.
So Ms. Simmons, will you clarify as we follow through with these appointments for tonight?
Let me just say one more thing. On the zoning, they have a December meeting that they, they need their board members, their charter. That was for just the building part.
We're on this topic. So there's a process that's been brought to us that, is there going to be a cost to that, that we might be moving to the first of the year on receiving applications?
Is there one?
There's some type of process that Elizabeth has made us aware in the email, that we might be changing some type of.
I'm still on my grant, I'm sorry.
Is there going to be a cost to that?
No, it's the same. You still receive the.
To my understanding, it's an upgrade process in what I read from Elizabeth.
Well, not for just the boards. I mean, the board, like right now, you can see any, any board application, I can mail, I can email it to you when they come in, but I don't do that unless, the only time that I do that is when we have an opening for that position coming up. If someone is needing to be reappointed, and I put that on the agenda at least a month, usually two months ahead of time, just to put it out there to let people know that that is coming up. And then I send you whatever applications I have, so that you have plenty of time, a month or more, to look at, to see. And if I get any in between that time before the meeting, you know, you will get those also. On grant, it's, it's just a whole, everything will be, it's just the way it's put into the system, instead of, yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not changing the process.
The problem is, is that we have to do our due diligence.
That's right.
And we have been up to this point.
But we also have to, we have to be supportive of our boards, in that when they need people and this has gone on and on and we've not gotten any more applications, that's all we have, and it's gone on for several months and they don't understand, and we have enough to fill those, that we honor, you know, their needs. And they have deadlines, like this zoning, the zoning board has a meeting coming up that they are going to require some voting. And also with the tree, they have the Tree City USA, they have.
Since we have this, let's move forward with what we have right now. And like I said, I challenge you all to just do better with our programs. So let's move forward with these, with what we have, to fill these.
Oh, we are?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Counselor, go.
Yep.
Just there. Yes. Yes, we take a five-minute break and then we'll come in and start.